And so I am calling to order the meeting of the Assembly Public Safety Committee. This is Wednesday, October 7th. And I'm Crystal Kennedy. I'll be chairing this meeting. My co-chair Cameron Perez Verdia is not able to join us today. But Mandy, if you can call the role, we'll find out who else is with us this morning. Thanks.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Perez Verdia? Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. Constant?
Here.
Mr. Dunbar?
Here.
Ms. Zalatell?
Here.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Mr. Waddleton?
Here.
Ms. Allard?
Here.
Ms. LaFrance?
Hello? Hello?
And there was an email received from Ms. LaFrance. There you are. All right. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I know we have a lot of other people from the various departments and staff. So I'm, as we go through the agenda, when we need you to do an update or whatever, or there are questions, you know, you're just going to have to chime in and then introduce yourself. So I think that'll probably work better. So if there are no additions or changes to the agenda, we'll go with the agenda as has been presented or posted. So I'm listening to see if there's anybody that needs to chime in on any changes. But not hearing any, I would like to change the order up just a tad. And that is I want for, I want all the departments for APD and AFD and the Law Department to do their usual updates. So we'll take those in order. But I think when we get to the conversation about the homelessness response assessment, and I realize that's a big term, we, we kind of wrestled with how to make that term make a little more sense. We really didn't come up with anything else. So I'll just explain that we really just wanted to kind of get an update from the various departments about some of their immediate needs and how they see what kind of immediate things could be done to help address some of the, some of the homeless impacts that we're seeing, you know, just really recently. So we can have that conversation kind of all in one group, if you will, when we get to that point. And then we'll kind of do a once-over with the alcohol tax funding. We do have the ordinance or the information that's been released for the alcohol beverage retail sales tax portion of the budget. So we can do a little bit of an update on that. And then we want to have the conversation about the body cams and some, and a recent AO that was introduced on that topic. So anyway, if that works for everybody, we'll just go ahead and start with APD with just some regular updates. So Chief Doll, I see you're here. I think we have Deputy Chief McCoy and Deputy Chief Curl with us. So you've got the floor, Chief.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Hey, it's Justin. I have some, just some regular updates, kind of the same information that we've presented previously. And so I'm going to share my screen and go over some of that. And I will keep it relatively short because I know there's a lot of stuff on the agenda for today, but always happy to answer questions. So let's start with this. Okay, you guys should be able to see a chart that says homicide victims for the period of January 1 to October 1. So this is as of a couple of days ago. Obviously, we had a homicide yesterday. So this number seven is actually an eight for 2020 so far this year. But we are continuing to compare relatively favorably to the last few years. And of course, the case that we had last night, detectives have been working since last night and continue to actively work. This is violent crime calls for service. And again, the, this is not my favorite bar chart because I think, given the scale, these don't look that much different. I think you can see that there's some slight downward trend here, and that continues. These numbers probably look a little different than what we presented from the first two quarters of 2020. And that's, we're sort of continuing to refine how we present this information to make it so it's the easiest to understand and the most relevant for people in the community to see and kind of get a sense of what's happening in Anchorage. And with the ultimate goal of having these posted to the APD website on a quarterly basis, just automatically, we'll be putting them out there so everybody can look at this. You know, we know there have been lots of discussion in the community about getting data from APD out where everybody can see it. And we're, we want to do the best we can with the existing systems and just have this be one small step forward on that path as we work to implement new systems and bring things online, pardon me, that, that let us do this in a, in a more comprehensive way in the future. And then same thing for property crimes. I think this is a little bit easier to see. But again, generally, seeing things trend downward, that's, that continues to be the case as we talked about previously. And then the Public Safety Committee basically let me know that there was an interest in just seeing a staffing update, you know, once a quarter or so. And so this is just kind of the current breakdown as of yesterday, what our staffing looks like. You can see that total of 594 employees. We're doing fairly well overall with vacancies. Right now, we have about 15 vacancies for sworn officers. That's not terrible for an agency our size. We intend to have an academy start in December and hopefully fill most of those vacancies up. Plus, we also have some people that are interested in coming to APD as lateral hires. So they already have law enforcement experience, and that is a good deal for the Police Department. Also note that there are still 32 of the 430 sworn officers are in training, either at the Police Academy or in field training. But you can see that we've done well with the dispatch center. We're down to four vacancies there. We have a hiring process going on for that. Same thing for police clerks. That's ongoing. And same thing for identification technician, evidence technician. And the Community Relations Specialist has actually been filled. That person started Monday, so new person onboard with our Community Relations teams. And I'm sure you guys will all have a chance to meet her in the not-too-distant future. So that's it for APD on just a quick overview of sort of stats update. And I will leave it there unless anyone has questions for me.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Let me see, I don't think we've got anybody in the queue yet on any questions. But I will start off with a question, and if anybody else has one, they can certainly get in the queue and we'll get their questions asked. But my question is in regard to the, the data that you showed there says that you have 27 vacancies and 32 in training. So does that mean that you may actually have more qualified applicants, if you will, or people in training that you have vacancies, actually have vacancies for? How does that work? You might be on mute, Chief.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, good question. So the officers in training, those are people that actually are employees. They're employees at the Anchorage Police Department. They're working here. They're filling, they're filling a slot. So the 15 vacancies for sworn that we show, those are above and beyond the people that are in training. So those are actual open slots that nobody is filling. So when we have an academy in December, I, I think that the way our recruiting is going, it's entirely possible that we'll have more than 15 qualified applicants. And so we may end up not being able to hire everyone because we'll only obviously be able to fill up the vacancies that we have. But if, if that were to occur, and that's not a terrible place for a police department to be, then anyone that is qualified but not hired for the December academy, we will, you know, hold their application until the June academy and see if we have a spot for them then. So when we never, you know, we don't want to turn away qualified applicants. So we'll, you know, we'll keep them until the next hiring cycle, if, if they're still available. Sometimes they get hired away by other agencies or they have some other opportunity that comes up. So it doesn't always, it doesn't always work out. But a lot of times, they'll still be available in six months. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, well, hang tight, Chief, then. We're going to go to the updates, regular updates. And I believe we've got Fire Marshal Brian Dean online with us, representing AFD. And if that's not correct, whoever is, please feel free to jump in.
No, that is correct. Thank you very much.
And Brian, if I got your, if I got your title wrong, please correct me.
You did very well. Yes, Fire Marshal. Thank you.
Well, thanks. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, it's going to be pretty brief for AFD this morning. We actually don't have any stats update for this month, but we are in the midst of firefighter candidate selection right now. We have 400 applicants that we went through. We're now down to 60 that are sitting for the chief's interview. And just for the month ahead, we're transitioning over to our winter operations, like removing the wildland fire, firefighting gear from our rigs, stowing those and doing the tire changeovers for all our apparatus, and then preparing for cold weather-related injuries. And that's probably pretty much our update for this month.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions from the Assembly members? Well, it doesn't look like it. So, okay, well, oh, go ahead.
So Brian, what's the status on thinning, like doing the firewise work in our parks?
The firewise is going to continue on until we can't actually see the ground cover anymore. We've got crews out doing those periodically. We're not moving as fast as we anticipated that we could. Some of those were hampered by our, our air pack rollout for our new MSA bottles. This year took all the Station 8 crew to handle that, which they had quite a few firewise inspections scheduled for their area. But those have been farmed out to some other crews, and we're, we're slowly working through those, and we'll continue to do those until we can't see the ground.
Okay, is that, are you referring to the, the work that was funded through the CARES Act?
No, this, that, that is through Parks and Rec. And our, our work is our, our firewise grant through the State Division of Forestry.
Okay.
We've been working on it the last several years.
I'm sorry, I met some firefighters in Ruta Cana Park who were doing an assessment. It sounded like they were figuring out what needed to be done, and then it would go to whoever to do the work.
Yeah, we upped with Parks and Rec to help them. They reached out to us to identify areas that, that they could get basically the most bang for their buck in, in their efforts to do beetles kill wildfire mitigation that would, would help us in our, our fire response and our neighborhood protection.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Got a follow-up from Mr. Constant for you.
Actually, thanks. John picked up on it. I was just going to get clarification between the firewise program and the work project that's clearing the beetle kill, but John took care of it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, then we'll go to the Law Department for a quick update from them. I see it looks like we have both Sarah Stanley and Todd Sherwood with us. So I don't know who wants to jump in on that. Probably Sarah. But anyway, any update from the Department of Law?
Um, yes, this is Sarah Stanley. Um, so we are anxiously awaiting the beginning of trials. That's what my office is focused on for the next month. We have about 308 cases that are set for that first trial call. Trials are going to start in first week of November, unless the court changes its mind. Felonies aren't starting with the state till January, but our office is going to be pioneering trial cases. So we've been having a lot of conversations about what that will look like, about how to do jury selection on Zoom and all sorts of exciting things. So yeah, we have a huge backlog of cases that are waiting for trial. That 300 number is only the one set for that first trial call date. There may be others set for later. In addition to those, we have thousands of cases that are, you know, sort of in process in pre-trial conference that just keep getting continued. So we have backlog. It's going to be a busy time come November, and it'll be kind of exciting and complicated to have those trials with social distancing and a lot of new technology. But that's what we're focused on right now. So that's what we're up to.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. I have a question for you from Ms. Zalatell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did we ever get a follow-up on what the defender cost would be for the alcohol tax? I know we were asking some really specific questions about that, and I don't recall seeing anything come through.
We talked about it a little at the last meeting. So it's, it's sort of, it's by contract. So there's currently a contract in place for that, which Civil actually negotiates with Denali Law Group. We understand the Assembly's concern about sort of justice issues and providing them with more funding. And, and just for the record, these are my colleagues who I work with all the time. So I have absolutely no interest in not, you know, giving them more, more money when it's appropriate. Basically, one question was, if you up our funding, does that automatically mean more cases are prosecuted? And my position is that, no, not necessarily. The number might increase a little, but a lot of it is quality of those services we could provide to victims and crafting sort of tailored Rule 11s for defendants and that kind of work behind the scenes, which wouldn't necessarily result in a higher caseload for DLG. Having said all that, you know, I have personally no objection to them getting more money through their contract, though I'm not the one that negotiates that. Civil does. So, you know, if this body or someone decided to give more money, you know, to Denali Law Group or whatever contract group to raise their funding, I would obviously have no objection to that. But it's not a sort of a one-for-one. But all, all the money, any money that would be a new position in my office doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that there'd be, that that would result in a ton of new cases and a higher caseload for DLG. So having said all that, you know, I have no objection if this body wanted to provide more funding somehow. But it's hard for me to speak to that because I'm not in Civil and I don't negotiate that contract. Basically, the cost for another attorney at DLG, I don't know what kind of benefits they provide, but I would guess it would be, I don't know, another $120,000. Does that help?
Thank you. Yeah, that's at least a number. So that's helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, I think it became kind of problematic with the idea of the way we contract for those services. So anyway, something to continue to think about in terms of what the need might be as we progress through some of these cases. Okay, so I'm going to kind of wrap up the update part unless there are any other additional questions. But I'd like to move into kind of this homelessness assessment conversation. So, and just to give you some background, this was a conversation that Mr. Perez Verdia and I were having, particularly after his exposure to an awful lot of homelessness activity in the Midtown area that gave him and his family quite a bit of concern. And it seemed to be all congregated around the Walmart, the Barnes and Noble area, you know, that C Street and Benson and Northern Lights, so in that area. And the question that we kind of came up with was, well, you know, we actually understand that there's a lot that we need to do in terms of having places to take people, in terms of getting them in, enrolled in, in very specific services and that. But are we missing something right now? Is there something that any of the departments think that they could be doing right now that would have an impact, that would help alleviate some of the stressful situations that we know exist out there? So it's a very open-ended question. So I'm hoping that both the Fire Department, Police Department, and even, you know, the Department of Law might have some thoughts about, you know, hey, if we could only do this right now. And so anyway, also I'll leave it open. I see Mr. Constant has a question. Mr. Constant, would it be helpful to just start off with your question right now? To help guide some of the conversation?
Yeah, I don't know that it's a question, but so some of you may or may not have been privileged to receive an email from a certain state legislator demanding immediate action, very aggressively. And in short, very unconstitutionally, it was like baffling. And there are a couple of hotspot areas in town, which include around the Wells Fargo on Fifth Avenue and around the Barnes and Noble area Walmart. And so I just want us to all be very cautious in our thinking about how we address this issue. We do need some form of assertive approach to the issues. There is a certain subset of people that we still haven't figured out any meaningful intervention toward. But we have to be very careful in the approach that has to do with law enforcement. And so I just want to put that on the table as a predicate to the conversation. I've received some emails this week that were not quite as rough as send them to the Chugash State Park, but pretty close.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Constant. Yeah, and I think that is really the conversation. And to a certain extent, we might be beating a dead horse here. But we really just wanted to see if there was something we were missing, something we haven't thought of yet, something that maybe is not necessarily a big fix, but something to help alleviate some of the pain. And particularly because it is a public safety issue. I think one of the things that I noticed was the way that it affects traffic on C Street sometimes. So anyway, let me just leave it open for any kind of comments from APD or AFD or anyone who wants to chime in.
Well, this is, this is Brian Dean from AFD. I, this is, this is pretty open-ended. And as far as AFD's resources go here, we didn't have a lot of ideas on how to address something like this other than the things that you mentioned in previously that we have been working on more of a long-range, long-range process with, you know, with the mobile crisis response, stabilization centers, behavioral health, substance abuse, and on and on, the things that we've been talking about in the, in the short term. I suppose that if, it, it, a lot of would depend, depend on what other agencies might respond, could, could dictate an AFD response to, to, in, as a result of those. We would support providing more resources to ASP to extend their range, perhaps staff more vans if the, if the Health Department can also support that.
Okay, thank you. Do you happen to know how many vans we actually have in operation right now?
I, I don't have that data handy. And it's, those are, along with the number of vans, it might take a little bit more analysis of the van interaction data. That will take some, some effort to compile. We did that a, a couple of years ago, but that's like two years old now. So it's something that we'd have to look into.
Great, thanks. Yeah, we're definitely looking for, what can we do in the short term? So, thank you. I've got Meg Zalatell in the queue. So why don't you go ahead, Ms. Zalatell, with a comment or question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think it would be really helpful to hear from the administration, if we have someone on, about where we're at with deploying those rapid rehousing dollars. I know the Sullivan's been full. So there isn't room for, in actually overcapacity. We've had a reduction in the census at Brother Francis after the COVID-19 outbreak there. So I know those rapid rehousing dollars are really a linchpin in freeing up some space. I believe at this point, because of the lack of shelter space, that we aren't currently doing any camp abatement. So I guess if we could get a little bit of an update for some context, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's, and that's a good question. I know we've got Ms. Nancy Burke on with us, and it looks like we have Bill Falsy. So I think one of those two would probably be well-suited to answer that question. So either one of you, please join us.
Well, this is Bill Falsy. Nancy Burke is the lead on deploying those rapid rehousing money. So I will pass the baton to her.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, we've been watching the numbers at Sullivan and attempting to create some additional spaces at Sullivan. But once we had to rebalance our shelter system with the COVID outbreak in the other locations, it created a huge problem for us. We're down by about 50 spaces. So the rapid rehousing funding is targeted at creating space at Sullivan. And we're in the process of drafting the contract right now. It was approved last Tuesday in the budget adjustment. And we are working with a nonprofit partner to, to get that money on the street so we can start moving people through those locations. Also, other things we're pursuing is looking for people who might have access to resources that we can move to other rental locations. And then there are some people who have HFC voucher papers, and they just need to shop for units. So we're connecting them to a landlord assistance program that might help them find units. And so that's our, that's our strategy presently. Last night, we had nearly full capacity at the shelter. And as of this morning, we have about 26 people who are on the waitlist for tonight.
Okay, great. Some follow-up then, Ms. Zalatell.
Thank you. Yeah, two follow-up questions. One to Ms. Burke about rapid rehousing and the other about Anchorage Safety Patrol. The first about rapid rehousing is, do we think if we get the million that's appropriated, deployed, that there will be a need for more before the end of 2020? And then the question with regard to ASP is, are both vans currently on the road and in service? And are we running into census issues or capacity issues at the sleep-off center, which is possibly hindering ASP's work? Thank you.
If you like, I can, I can take the first one. The, the million dollars after we have case management, one of the key components of the rapid rehousing program is to have case managers follow, follow people so that they securely enter employment and resources so that they can continue their apartments after the initial assistance period for one year. We want to make sure that once we create capacity, we don't have folks returning to homelessness. So once we allocate the personnel resources for that, the remaining funds will be used for deposits and, you know, a small allocation of resource to get people started in their apartments. And the last time, we have one, one prior time to compare to this, this. And that's when we had our partners working at the Sullivan from the period between April and June. We were able to get about 200 people out in, in those months. And that's a similar number that we think we can target for this rapid rehousing program using the million dollars. So we think that'll take us through the end of the calendar year. And then those funds will be expended or shortly into January. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Anything else on that, Ms. Zalatell?
No, thank you. That's helpful. Just the ASP question. Thanks.
Okay.
And through the Chair to Assembly Members, I just dragged Nicole Lebo into this meeting as she may be best posed to answer that question, but she didn't hear the question. So could, would you mind restating the number of vans and census question?
Yes, Mr. Falsy. So the question is, how many vans right now are deployed for ASP? And are we running into any issues regarding census or capacity at the sleep-off center that might be curtailing ASP's current operations, either due to social distancing or demand or both? Thanks.
Through the Chair, if I can address that?
Yes, please. Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to get into some of the data and pull that up for you. But I, I want to answer the second part of your question around the capacity of the sleep-off center. We are not hitting capacity even with the six-foot. The, the larger issue is when ASP drivers are coming upon known COVID-positive individuals and then having to figure out a process with that. But that is, that is slowing operations down and involving actually AFD. So that's the bigger issue. But in and of themselves, I'll, I'm just going to look at a spreadsheet first and come back and verify, and I'll start putting information into the, the chat bar, if that's okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You got it.
You had a follow-up of sorts, too.
Yes, thank you. So back to the main previous question, which is, you know, what's to be done about these small pockets of unmanageable areas? You know, the question that keeps coming to my mind is the possibilities. It shouldn't be a police intervention. The police power should be reserved for interventions of criminal nature. And it shouldn't be the fire department because, you know, as much as I love you guys, it's too expensive. And so the question is, who is the proper entity to do the outreach? And I know we funded a bunch of outreach recently. And I know that that work is being done. I just received a nice report about all the contacts they made in the camps and whatnot. But some of the things I've been hearing in my kind of outreach to people outside of Alaska and in my research is that there are forms of very aggressive, unrelenting outreach that wraps around these small pockets of areas where people are being hooligans in the streets, you know, doing whatever they do, unmentionable things. You know, they have a right to exist, but we also have a right to put someone there to tell them, hey, there's a better place for you to be. And tell them that every 10 minutes until they get the idea that where they are is not where they're supposed to be. And so I wonder if there is any work going on to identify, whether it's through the outreach program we've already developed, which seems to be a much more soft handed, warm and welcoming approach to some of that stick based approach like and not stick like the police, but stick like, hey, we're not going anywhere until you go to the mass shelter. And from there, we will find a place for you to be tonight. But this is not the place for you. I'm hoping we can figure out an intervention along those lines that's aggressive and unrelenting, but isn't the police or the fire department. And it isn't a mental health intervention because that's a separate issue altogether and we're investigating that. So I don't know where that might lead us or who might be responsible for such a thing, or how we address the issues of outreach to figure out a way to get a more aggressive approach for just a few targeted areas.
Well, thank you, Mr. Constant. And I do appreciate that because I do think that's really one of the ideas behind this idea of what are the immediate things that we can do? Because those are the very visible kinds of response that I think people are looking for. And I guess I would disagree a bit that the that the APD is only for criminal types of responses. I think that they do a lot of public safety types of responses. And one of those is making sure that, you know, sidewalks aren't blocked. And like I said, you know, a month ago, I a friend of mine said she saw two children on bicycles have to swerve out onto C Street in order to avoid hitting people on the sidewalk. That's a huge public safety issue for me. So I think in some respects, APD officers are absolutely just providing that level of of safety. You know, that that protects all of us that is definitely not related to some kind of crime being committed.
You know, Crystal, if I could, though.
Sure.
I just would offer that. What most people would imagine is the police roll up and sit there and then are a presence and then are harassing people to move them along. And that, to me, is a nonstarter with the police. We can't use them that way. And so, yes, if the police are called or witness a child having to go around someone on a sidewalk. Yes, they have a right to intervene, but we can't use our police power for nuisance abatement. And this is, you know, and so there's a very fine line we have to dance around in this to ensure that we use our police power properly. So I'm just very, very concerned that we don't kind of cross a line there. And so to me, there is an answer in there and I agree with you. But great care is in order in that conversation.
Well, and that's why we do have these conversations so that people can brainstorm enough to come up with something that really does work. So we haven't heard anything really from APD Chief or one of the deputy chiefs. If anybody wants to chime in on that, I'd be happy to hear from you.
Hey, thank you, ma'am. This is Justin again. I agree, this is an interesting conversation. You know, I think one of the main issues that the Police Department runs into when we start having this conversation around homelessness is this idea that I see people that I don't like the way they look and they're on the corner of whatever, or they're standing on the sidewalk someplace. And so we would like the Police Department to come and make them disappear. And I mean, honestly, like, that's the most frequent complaint that we get on this issue. And that's not really something that we can do legally. And so, you know, we do have to be careful with the way we address that. And you know, the municipality has attempted in the past, and all I know that we have several people here from the municipal attorney's office, but you know, the municipality has attempted in the past to to try to regulate some of those things and pass laws about sitting on the sidewalk and some other things that frankly have not been successful. They have not withstood legal challenge. So when it comes to kind of sort of nuisance behavior abatement, it can be something that's very challenging for the Police Department to be the tool to use to try to address it. So it's something that we're always looking at. You know, we do things that are public safety oriented that are not specifically and solely related to criminal investigations. But obviously, our conduct always has to be lawful. And I know everybody here understands that, but it is something that makes this more complicated when we get involved.
Thank you. And definitely a delicate situation to handle with each situation specifically. So I just wanted to, for the record, note that Ms. Lebo did post the graph with the seasonal use intakes per month information on the chat and she will be emailing that to members. And I suspect we could also put that on the Public Safety Committee's webpage as well. It looks like I have Ms. Zolotel in the queue and then Ms. Stanley. So Ms. Zolotel, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So can we talk a little bit about what role, if any, it would be appropriate for the CAP team to play if camp abatement is on hold because shelter is full? Is there any potentiality for their presence to assist? Maybe they can't cite individuals, but I know a large part of what they do is they do notice camps for purposes of abatement, but they also chat with people and they're usually well aware of the resources. So it would be maybe like a enhanced form of outreach in some capacity. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Stanley?
Hi. So I sort of threw this question past some of my people here in the office yesterday. And we just had sort of a brainstorming session. I realized we're on the back end. We're at the point, our office comes in when some when someone has actually already committed a crime and been charged. But we talked about what would it take to really help address homelessness problems better when we have both these defendants and these victims in our office? The first thing is that it would be really great if we had better sort of networking and relationships with with all the agencies that work with the homeless, with CIT, with CAP, with Nancy's office, with ASP. I mean, we have good relations. However, for example, our office could benefit from, here's an example. We found out about this agency, Partners for Reentry, that will actually find people housing and works with people who have criminal charges. And we do a thing called deferred sentencing agreements where we could actually craft like a Rule 11 plea offer where someone actually has to sort of work the program and and work with an agency and get housing. And we could connect people with agencies if we had just more resources and time to do it. So I think if we had increased sort of connections and meaningful relationships with all these partners and we're more aware of the nonprofits out there, like Partners for Reentry, that would be the first thing. Then we could use pretrial diversion and deferred sentencing agreements, which are they're both kind of things where we make an offer to a criminal defendant and then they have to do certain things to get their charge reduced or dismissed. Then and we could make some of the requirements being things like finding housing, you know, working a program. And then we would actually supervise compliance to see whether they met the requirements they were supposed to. So in a way, this would be like doing an alternative court, but totally in house. So for example, Wellness Court through the court system is for people with addiction issues. So someone opts into it, they agree to do certain things. There's sort of a pass consequence and a fail consequence. And the court system monitors compliance and hooks the person up with programs. And then at the end, if they're successful, there's reduced sentences. If theoretically, we could do that same sort of thing in house just by doing deferred sentencing agreements and pretrial diversion. If we had the resources to really have relationships with all those agencies and nonprofits and the knowledge base to really write meaningful Rule 11 agreements where we know what the programs are, we can require people to work the program. We can keep in touch with the program and see if the person's in compliance. And then, you know, there'd be an outcome. Also, we could follow up with petitions to revoke probation. More if we crafted meaningful Rule 11 agreements with conditions of probation that involve working a program. And by working a program, I mean programs that help people get into housing. If we write those rule elevens, then we could actually follow up with conditions of probation more to help people comply with their probation. So but that would all take that that alone is probably a full time job. Oh, and the other part is that that person could also use relationships with all these agencies to also provide resources and connections for our homeless victims, of whom we have quite a few, as it's dangerous to be living out there. So this is all just brainstorming in the last 24 hours. But basically, to really do this kind of networking with other government agencies and with the nonprofits and to really craft these offers and then to actually do the sort of monitoring and follow up with these individual people. That would probably be like a whole position, basically. So that was just our brainstorming in 24 hours. Still in the brainstorming phase, but I don't know if that helps.
Well, yeah, I think it does. And I think if it's anything that really helps people even to get into housing, like you said, to make sure that they have kind of a long term plan, I think that would be helpful. So so Sarah, I'll get with you and talk with you a little bit more about that potential. And then maybe we can put that on our agenda as a real conversation, particularly since we're, you know, jumping into budget season here. So, okay, so my apologies, we need to go back to Mrs. Zolotel's question of APD. And that was just in regard to whether what CAP's role could be when camp abatement is basically on hold. So I don't know if you want to formulate that question any better, Ms. Zolotel. If not, we'll let APD jump in and answer that. Thanks.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, nope, that's the question. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you both. This is Justin. Ms. Zolotel, I'm not, I don't know if I understand what you're asking for. And it's probably, I just, I think I'm confused, but are you asking if CAP can do what?
Sure. Thanks, Chief. So if CAP is not noticing camps because abatement is on hold, could they go and maybe either foot patrol or otherwise check out some of these hotspots?
I see, I see. Okay, thank you for that question. So CAP is actually, and the CAP Lieutenant, Lieutenant Barrington is here today. And she's been sending me some information, but that's exactly what they've been doing. And that's kind of part of their ongoing mission is when we do have someplace that pops up, they're going and looking for appropriate things for the Police Department to take action on, whether it's trespass or, you know, other criminal activity that we can address with the tools that we have, even if that's just issuing citations sometimes. They're going and doing those things. So I do appreciate that question and the ability and the opportunity to highlight that they are responding to those those types of hotspots, I guess.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great, thank you. And yeah, I think just in general, what Mr. Perez Verdi and I were trying to get at was what are the things, you know, what can we do to make sure that we're that everything has not gotten so frustrated that nothing's happening? We certainly didn't want to see there just be, oh, I can't do this or I can't do that kind of a of approach to everything. But just to make sure that if there were things that any of the departments or any of those agencies involved, you know, if they needed another, a little boost of something to help them in their job of being as responsive as possible, we wanted to make sure that we were you know, turning over those stones, so to speak, and finding some of those potential solutions. Particularly because we just feel like there's just been such an immediate need probably to do that. So so any other comments in this?
Yes, Madam Chair, Christopher here. I see that John has his hand raised, though, and he hasn't spoken.
Okay, and I, yes, I don't get that on the chat, but yes, okay. And, okay, so Mr. Waddleton, do you want to jump in?
Thanks. I raised my hand because I couldn't see how to get into chat for a moment there, but I, so we moved on. But Ms. Stanley, I think what you described there is something that we really have been looking for. So I look forward to learning more and getting something going there. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
And so
Mr. Constant, go ahead.
Thank you. So I think what the public feels, and it's not unjust that they feel this way, is there is a lack of the stick in the conversation, carrot and stick. And I know some people in the field hate that conversation. But some form of order and discipline that needs to be applied in places where there's just a general character of of nuisance behavior in the streets. And I think we do need to spend more time asking ourselves, what tools do we have that we can apply that aren't the police and that aren't the fire department? That are similar to what we stood up with ASP, which is to pick up people who are extraordinarily intoxicated so they don't die in the streets. But has a function that its mission is to ensure that those nuisance behaviors don't go unchecked. And to drive them toward where the services are that we are supplying and are able to fund and drive. And so we really do need to have that conversation. And so this is a good entree. And I don't know that it necessarily is a quote homelessness conversation as as such, and maybe it's more of a conversation about behaviors in the streets. I'm not sure. And so I do think we need to keep this plank alive and start to develop concepts that can do this. The mental health first aid is another plank in this, but some of these folks don't fit cleanly into that category, though they were surely diagnosable. There just aren't places for them. So anyhow, this is a very good and meaningful topic for us to address. And we should be figuring out a mechanism for a kind of providing that order in the streets that is at a level below police and fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Yes, agree. So any other comments? If not, we're going to move on to the alcohol tax. Okay, well, not seeing anything. And, you know, my apologies because I have not really spent any time talking to anybody in regard to what recently came out from the administration on the alcohol tax suggestion. So I know we have Mr. Falsy online with us. So is there any kind of a precursor, any kind of statement that might want to set up a little bit about this document? I don't know how many people have actually had the chance to look at it. I just caught caught it from the announcement that came out, the email that came out from, I believe it was the Health Policy Department or Committee. So anyway, Mr. Falsy, would you by any chance be able to comment on this at this point? And for the record, Ms. France has just joined us. So welcome, Ms. France. Mr. Falsy, anything that we need to know about the document? Go ahead.
Yes, Assemblymember Kennedy, I can do a little bit of extemporaneous work on this. Normally, I would pass it off to Jason Bachman said or Lance Wilber, but I don't think either of them are here. As you mentioned, in the prior meeting at the Health Policy Committee, we were attending to the fact that there was a lot of interest in how the alcohol tax dollars were to be spent. And so it appears as a special appendix in the proposed budget appendix R. Beyond that, I think maybe who the group does spend a little bit of time all digging into that and then probably it's worth additional conversation focused on itself. I'm happy to try to answer questions. Otherwise, I'm not sure what else would be valuable for the community at this moment.
And that is my question as well. So it looks like Mr. Gates has put the link on the chat in case anybody hasn't seen it yet and wants to. in case anybody hasn't seen it yet and wants to look at it real quick. But Mrs. Alatell, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I would just make the request, you know, I think it came up in Health Policy, and I think it will come up across various committees. Maybe we do a separate work session on just that appendix and how it dovetails or doesn't dovetail with some of the proposals and work that the members had put forward. And I see the chair is there. Thank you.
Yeah, we're getting people queuing in here, too. And, you know, and I would agree with you, I think that's probably the best route to go right now. Because I think there are some things that I would certainly like to address on this proposal. So, Mr. Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so just as a reminder to my colleagues, so we, there wasn't any further work sessions scheduled. I had told you all that after the budget came out that I would work with the administration to figure out a path forward. And, you know, it just looks like based on this conversation and the previous conversation, and just through a cursory review of what is proposed, that a work session is likely the best place to have this versus having it during one of the already scheduled work sessions on the budget. So you should hear more about a deep dive into that appendix here in the coming week.
Great, appreciate that, Mr. Rivera. Thank you so much. Mr. Constant.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the administration, Jason and Bill and everybody, for heeding the wisdom of not appropriating or drafting an appropriation of all of those alcohol tax funds, and instead looking at somewhere between two-thirds and three-quarters to ensure we actually collect the revenues in these uncertain times. And so I'm really grateful that you took that approach.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Constant. So if there's no other questions or comments on this particular item, we will move on because we want to have a conversation, you know, kind of a preliminary conversation on body cams. So, not seeing anybody else in the queue. So yes, let's move on then to body cams. I have asked the police chief, the police department, to kind of give us a bit of an update, if you will, you know, maybe a mini presentation on what they believe the implementation of body cams might look like, some of kind of the practical aspects of that. And then I'd ask the legal department to maybe give us an update on some of the potential legal hurdles we might have in that respect. So, Chief Doll, if you or any of your department is ready, maybe with some comments, can you kind of kick us off on this whole conversation about body cams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is Justin again. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. You know, as I've said before, APD is completely open to the idea of body cameras. Generally, they tend to show that our officers are doing the right things for the right reasons, but they definitely help us find those times when maybe they don't. The number one really issue for APD with implementing a program like this is funding. We just, it's not funded in our current budget. They're not inexpensive. I know it can be really difficult to understand sometimes why it's not simple, right? Because if I'm a normal person, I can go to the store and buy a GoPro and, you know, duct tape it to my body and just start recording things, and that seems fairly simple. But if you think about doing that across hundreds of officers, storing all that data, making that data somewhat easy to retrieve for criminal prosecution, and then allowing access to people like Ms. Stanley to be able to have it available for criminal cases, it suddenly gets more complicated. And I know we talked about this much earlier in the summer, and we had hoped to get something in front of the committee, and frankly, in front of the assembly a little sooner. But we had to, as we worked our way through what that might look like, we had to de-conflict that with our ongoing efforts to acquire a new computer-aided dispatch system and records management system, and all the other technology things that are happening at APD. And just like every other organization, APD is becoming very technology-heavy. So it took a little longer than I had hoped for, but I know that recently some information was submitted, I think, to the assembly schedule by Mr. Falsy, and so I think he has some additional comments on that.
Great, thank you. Okay, yes, and we do, we do have a recently introduced or will be introduced ordinance that's going to be introduced on October 13th in regard to some of that, to handling some of that funding question. So, okay, I've got Mr. Constant in the queue. I do want to see if Mr. Falsy can answer some of our questions as well. So, Mr. Constant and Mr. Waddleton.
Thank you. So I saw the item is introduced, and I intend to pull the item and schedule the public hearing for a later date than October 27th to allow more broad public input. There's no way that an action on that item, if we approve it, can happen until the next election in April. And so I haven't quite settled on when I think the time would be best to have that public hearing and go through that conversation. But I don't think a rush to get there is the answer. And so just for folks' awareness, that's my plan, is to pull the item and the consent agenda conversation and set it for a public hearing at a date TBD sometime closer to when we're addressing questions for the ballot and bonds and et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. And that's definitely reasonable, and that might be what Mr. Rivera is going to be commenting on because he's in the queue, too. But, you know, I will say, one of the things that I noticed about this is there were some numbers in here. So somebody's been doing some figuring and trying to determine what this might cost to implement. So I was good, I was glad to see that there's some research being done on this. And it may be Mr. Falsy can answer a little bit more on this, but I'll go with who's in the queue right now and then get to Mr. Falsy, hopefully. So Mr. Waddleton, you're next.
No, thank you. And I suppose this will be a topic of conversation much larger soon. But to Chief Doll, you know, in my reading on body cams, one of the drawbacks is that it can take more of the officer's time, or at the end of the shift, now they write the reports. But now they have to write the reports and apparently sync it with their body cam. And I'm worried that essentially that is taking officers off the streets. They have this trade-off, you know, the benefits of body cam. But the loss is we have less coverage on the streets. Is that a valid thought?
Thank you, sir, for that question. I think, I mean, it depends on the system you go with. Obviously, what we're trying to do in the, in the document that we recently submitted that includes the potential of having body cams, and it's, you know, it proposes a funding mechanism, and I think that's what Mr. Falsy wants to talk about. But, you know, my, my overall vision for APD when it comes to technology is to have an integrated technology plan. So all of our different bits of technology are complementary to each other, and also maximize an officer's availability in the field. That's, that's our most expensive item at APD, right, is basically officer time, hiring officers, training them, and then putting them out in the field. So I want to make sure that whatever we do technology-wise is giving them more free time and it's not occupying more of their time. So I think that's actually a great question, and that is kind of our number one priority when it comes to all of these projects, and why we're so, spending so much time trying to carefully fit them together so that they're not having that kind of negative impact on availability. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waddleton. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Rivera.
Thank you. So two things. First is, want to go off of Mr. Constant's comment. So, yeah, I too had the same thought process when I first saw this. I was skeptical that we would be able to vote on this on October 27th. So there is an easier path forward rather than having a member pull the item. The chair can simply, during my chair's report, direct the clerk to change the public hearing on the item as long as there's no objection from the body. So that is the path forward that I would suggest. And if we have a date in mind, which for me would be sometime in December, that's what we could do. The second topic, just I guess going into the ordinance, which I hope Mr. Falsy will be able to do a quick rundown through. So I just wanted to have a better understanding of the decisions that are being made by discussion and potential approval of the ordinance. Are we talking about the type of body cameras? Are we talking about the policies around the body cameras? And so I, I haven't myself looked at the ordinance. I'll be doing that when I read the binder. But want to get a better understanding of that, as well as would just like to hear from the administration why they chose this route over other routes for body cameras. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rivera. Yeah, good questions. And, you know, I knew this would be a pretty important conversation to have, and I feel like we're just kind of, right now, kicking it off because we're all starting to be more aware and we have a lot of questions. But I do want to hear from Mr. Falsy or anyone else in the administration that might want to speak specifically to the ordinance, and definitely to the Department of Law, because I did kind of ask them the question in terms of what kinds of issues they think we'll have from a, kind of from a state statute and constitutional perspective. But, so anyway, Mr. Falsy, if you are chomping at the bit to fill us in, please go ahead.
I'm chomping at the bit. Wild horses, fairly bridled. Thank you, Assembly Member Kennedy. Just for table setting, I think we are largely on the same page with everything that we are hearing now. I'll start where I was going to end, which is that the way this ordinance is proposed, it would put a proposition on the April ballot. So it needs to be approved by January, but it certainly doesn't need to be set for a public hearing in October. We wanted to get it into the assembly agenda to start seeding the conversation with, as the chair said, with some hard numbers. But we're not on any ramrod timeline. We want to set this for December and have work sessions between now and then. That is absolutely fine. Just to quickly sort of review the bidding, I mean, this has been a topic that's been slow-moving. Back in June, the police chief said, we're going to send this to the assembly. Then in July, Jason Botenstedt said, yep, we're going to send it to the assembly. Then by September, there was a big article in the newspaper that said, hey, where is this? It's supposed to be coming. And then we got a little bit called out for slow-watching it in the editorial in the newspaper last week. But to the item itself, if, this is the long-proposed proposal. It took a little bit of time to bake, and I'll explain why. As you heard the chief say, we, the police department has been entirely open to having body cameras. The chief problem has just been that it is very expensive. And it's not just a matter of buying the cameras. It was also a problem of managing all of the, of the video and doing all the storage. If this was 15 years ago, all we would probably have done is ask for a bond proposition. Can we buy a bunch of cameras? Can we buy a bunch of computer storage? And in order to get this ripened up for assembly consideration, there were several things we had to work through. The first was, increasingly, the vendors are outside of the model of selling you the cameras and selling you the computer hardware to manage all of the digital evidence. But rather, it's software as a service and a hardware subscription model, which if you remember Proposition 9 from this year's ballot was exactly the same thing that we encountered with the fire department, where now increasingly you lease the laryngoscopes and defibrillators. And so what we have proposed is what would have been a bond proposition 15 years ago, but is instead now attending to the change in the reality, which is just, can we do something that feels very much like a bond, but instead allow us to subscribe to this service? That was the first consideration. Second consideration was, we had to get some pricing on this. And so that took a little bit of work to work with the various vendors to get it all set. And third consideration was, we wanted to make sure that we weren't just solving one problem while creating other problems or leaving other problems unattended to. So you'll see that this is not just body-worn cameras, but also the in-car cameras. And as you could hear from the chief, the system that we have now is nearing its end of life. And like, like with the body-worn cameras themselves, it would be ripe for a refresh and ripe for something like a capital purchase, but increasingly, you rent those. So, and then the last thing that we had to figure out after figuring out the pricing and the ecosystem, because we want all these systems to talk to each other, and increasingly, we found that the vendors sell them all as a package, is we wanted to clean up a prior bond issuance from 2015 where we had asked the community for money for the computer-aided dispatch and records management systems as part of the E911 upgrade. And there are still $940,000 there that is authorized for indebtedness, but that we don't plan on using because we are moving to the subscription ecosystem service. So all of that took some time to finally piece together. As soon as we finally had it, and it sort of in coordination with the budget, we wanted to bring it to the assembly so that everyone could look at all of that. I think for present purposes, not only are we totally open to putting this on whatever timeline allows for thoughtful community conversation, we also want to say this is a preview of coming attractions. Because getting to Assembly Member Rivera's concerns, there are a lot of things to figure out if we're going to launch body cams. When do the body cams have to be on? How long do the data have to be retained? What kind of public records rules will apply to the video footage? There's some union issues to work out. But before we dive into solving all of those problems, the first question is, do we want to buy these? And so we've ripened up the conversation of how much do they cost? And we've created a mechanism to put that question to the community. So that's, that's the bit of the introduction, but you'll see that the meat of the ordinance is just this proposition that would go to voters and say, on $100,000, do you want to pay $5.30 to subscribe to all of these services?
Thank you, Mr. Falsy. And, yeah, I agree with the fact that you said that we have a lot more things to talk about here because there certainly are more questions right now than we have answers. So we need to proceed toward finding those answers before we kind of have the full, big picture here. So this is kind of the beginning of the conversation, and certainly with the ordinance here, we're going to have a lot more conversation. But I do want to get to the Department of Law just to kind of see what some of their comments and maybe their questions are in this process as well. So, Ms. Stanley, I don't know if you want to handle that. I saw where Mr. Sherwood is on with us, too. So whoever is taking the lead on this, please start us off.
I think, I think that I should refer to Mr. Sherwood at the moment. I'm aware of a lot of the issues and questions, but I think, yeah, if Mr. Sherwood wants to speak to it, and I can follow up.
Great, okay. Well, we put you on the spot, Mr. Sherwood.
Yeah, this is Todd Sherwood. The thing that I can address is the public records aspect, which is, I'll just talk about it in terms of awareness. But, and Chief Doll may, in some ways, have more specifics. But from my review of body cams generally, there's huge storage issues. So that's going to be part of the expense. Now, and again, Chief Doll might address this, but they have in-car camera videos, so to some degree, they're dealing with that issue. From a public records standpoint, one of the things that's always important, and our code in AMC 3.90 reflects this, that you're balancing people's right to privacy versus the public's right to know. And of course, in Alaska, unlike many states, we have a specific privacy clause in our constitution. So we tend to look at the privacy issue even more strongly. And we've had this come up in certain car cam videos. And, and the whole idea behind public records and making things public and transparent is so that the public is able to know how government is conducting the people's business. So in some cases, we have to know where to literally draw that line, say, in releasing a certain video. Now, generally speaking, obviously, that's not going to happen if it's still under investigation, in no small part because you don't want to harm a defendant's right to a fair trial by having a certain video out there. We don't have case law in Alaska on this, but there is some interesting federal case law that talks about not only protecting, say, the suspect's right to privacy, but maybe if that person, if a person's been killed or something, the estate's right to privacy, there's even a right to privacy for the decedent themselves, and balancing those things out. And we already work with the police department when these issues come up, and we'll continue to do that. But all that to say, the body cams will expand that, that universe. And I'm not saying that, that that's a good or a bad, it's just a fact of life. And I can answer questions on that. The other thing I would just, and Sarah Stanley may want to address this, but it, of course, it kind of creates an additional thing. And I used to be a prosecutor for the And I used to be a prosecutor for the state and used, uh, various videos, especially car cam videos going back to the 1990s. Um, so one of the issues for prosecutor, and again, not insurmountable, this is just so Assembly has awareness, but they sometimes can create expectations because, you know, the average person will see on TV, um, you know, very steady, you're watching a crime show, it's a very steady, high resolution video of something. And then you see the reality isn't like that. Or sometimes there's a perception that what you're seeing in the video is the primary evidence in a case or all the evidence in a case. And it's just another issue that prosecutors then and defense counsel need to work with that, um, that's only one piece of the evidence.
Thank you, Mr. Sherwood. Um, I have a question for you, but, um, since you kind of invited, um, Ms. Stanley, she may have a, I think she has a comment, so I would like to hear from her too. So Sarah, if you've got something that you want to add to that, please do.
Sure. Um, I think Todd is right about sort of, uh, the changing norms of what a juror, a jury expects to see in a criminal prosecution. Like for example, with in-car video, um, yeah, it's easy for, um, basically jurors to think that because they've watched CSI, that, um, if we don't have fingerprints and DNA and, and a video, you know, then what are they basing their decision on? So there is sort of a evidence inflation going on over the last probably, you know, 20 years that way. Um, but we've dealt with that with video. We deal with that when a case doesn't have video, car video, so we could probably deal with this too. Um, the legal issues, I think I defer to Mr. Sherwood because a lot of them really are going to be civil issues. It'll ultimately be up to civil to defend if there is a privacy lawsuit. I see the biggest issue for me, um, having to do with privacy, not just of the defendant, but of the victims and the witnesses, um, especially in DV cases where the investigation is happening in someone's home. If I was, um, a civil attorney, that's where I would file the privacy, the privacy lawsuit. Um, there's a huge difference between audio recording and, um, an interview with a victim in their home in the middle of a crisis when, um, and actually videotaping the inside of someone's home. It's a huge invasion of privacy. Um, and I'm not saying it's, it's not worth it, but, um, I think that's where, um, the privacy legal challenges would probably crop up. I also just have a concern about getting, um, all the reaching out, like this group, uh, reaching out to the victim advocacy people, um, and making sure that sort of they're on board and, um, that we have their support if we are going to move towards body cams, um, because of precisely, um, these reasons. That's all I have right now.
Great. Thank you. Well, and I, and I appreciate those answers. Um, it sounds to me like, uh, there's nothing that basically prohibits us from doing body cameras. It's just a matter of how we write policies to basically make it all useful and work in the, in the trial court system. Um, but I've been made aware that we have Benjamin Bowman that is with the Department of Law and he apparently has researched a great deal on this topic. So, um, Mr. Bowman, if you are here and available, please, uh, clue us in on what we need to know.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy, and thank you everyone for the chance to talk. Uh, as Ms. Stanley and Mr. Sherwood have already identified, the, 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 there is no legal barrier, but that to issuing body cams, but there is some legal considerations that we'll need to address more with the how than if the weather. Uh, the big debate is privacy, not only for criminal defendants or accused, but also privacy for the average citizen who may or may not be interacting with the police or be incidentally caught in the background in the middle of a recording. Uh, with, and as Ms. Stanley pointed out, with an additional concern regarding recordings in sensitive locations such as an individual's home or maybe a public restroom or any place where an individual might not be in, uh, they might be in a sensitive position either due to, um, mental difficulty or intoxication or a lack of a state of dress. Uh, but all of these things we can address and put to bed some of these privacy concerns by structuring the policy that we eventually would come forward with to govern the use of body cams. And it's also worth noting that whatever policy is put out, we'll need to consider criminal defendants and criminal accused's privacy, but also the privacy of public citizens. And third, privacy of the officers themselves so that we need to make room in our policy so that they can take a break and, you know, use the restroom themselves or go to the bathroom without violating some use of the body cam policy. And I can speak further on these issues, uh, if, if anyone has additional questions. Uh, but the short version is it's a question of how, not if. The, we can do body cams, um, but we'll need to structure the policies carefully to address the privacy concerns and the privacy legalities.
Great. Thank you. Well, it sounds like we're going to definitely have a lot more conversation, um, in the legal aspects of all of this. Um, Mr. Dunbar, you were in the queue, but then maybe not. Um, did you have something you wanted to ask about?
No, it's fine.
Okay. All right. Ms. Alatell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question from Mr. Bowman. Uh, when you say policy, are you referring to just, um, like internal policy? Are you talking about like codified expectations within municipal code about body cameras? And the reason I asked the question is when we brought forward the possibility of onsite consumption of marijuana by inhalation, we put code provisions forward as part of the ballot measure. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around what the possibilities are. Thanks.
Different jurisdictions have addressed that in different ways and honestly, both systems have been used. Almost every location, uh, will have an internal police policy. Chief Dahl already has regarding, uh, the, the in-car cameras. We already have policy regarding that. Most jurisdictions will not only develop a body cam policy, but also make it very public and available so that it is the public aware of what will be happening, what they can expect from officers. Uh, but some places also fully codify, uh, the, fully codify the, uh, body cam policy or things like that. It is less common. More often it's an internal policy.
Anything else, Ms. Alatell?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Great. Thank you. Okay. Well, we're kind of winding down here. I know we've got, uh, members of the public that, um, want to make some comments or ask questions, um, either is, is, uh, welcome. Um, I think, uh, we can suffice it to say that we have more conversation to go just in regard to everything regarding body cameras and that's the costs, uh, how we implement it, how it affects staffing, uh, how it certainly affects, uh, any legal challenges and policy drafting. So, um, we're definitely going to be having those conversations, uh, particularly like I said, since we have this ordinance and, uh, both the chair and, um, Mr. Falsy have spoken in regard to how we're going to move forward, uh, with that specific proposal. So, um, at this point, I know we've been joined by, um, Ms. Hodge Groden, and I just want to give her a chance to, uh, either comment or ask any questions that need to kind of go into consideration with this, uh, whole idea of body cameras. So Celeste, if you're on with us, um, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Good morning. My name is Celeste Hodge Groden, and many of you know that I've worked in the civil rights arena for many years, um, actually over 30 years advocating for the rights of people of color. For years I fought against injustice and for equity for people in the areas of economics, justice, health and education. I've served as president of the NAACP, uh, for nearly a decade, as the executive director of Shiloh Community Development, um, as the president, as the current president and CEO of the Alaska Black Caucus. We're an organization that was formed in the seventies to combat systemic and institutional racism against people of color. So police officers across this country are involved in our everyday lives. They patrol streets, our sidewalks and our public spaces. And they are often first on the scene, yes, when crime breaks out and when disaster strikes. They are and have been for nearly two centuries, our nation's, nation's first responders. And yet, our country's approach to public safety and whom it protects and serves, whether real or perceived, has undermined community trust. This has long been so from early slave patrols to harassment and unlawful surveillance of civil rights activists to criminalization of people of color. This history is alive today, born out of disparities in policing practices. From stops in searches to arrests and use of force. From Ferguson, Baltimore, Sacramento to Watts, Detroit and Los Angeles, to Chicago, Newark, Selma and yes, Anchorage. The places and the times are different, but the impact of the tragedies are the same. In recent years, outrage over harassment and deaths of people of color, black people specifically, at the hands of police officers, has ignited the movement for black lives and inspired national debate around systemic racial profiling and police violence. Local, state and national organizations have long worked to reform policing and strengthen accountability and are now redoubling their efforts to reimagine public safety and create a stronger, safer country for us all. The Alaska Black Caucus supports and joins this effort. Their country and its many diverse communities, police officers included, will benefit if we succeed. To make this vision a reality, we need, we, we need to work at the national, state and local levels in our communities to realize a shared version, vision of public safety that respects and protects all human lives and lifts up those most affected by harmful police policies and practices. And we need innovative ideas from all perspectives in our diverse society to rethink public safety and renew community trust. We can overcome the challenges facing us and thus the reason we support body cameras for police. Police body cameras improve police accountability and lower reports of policeman misconduct. They provide visual and audio evidence that can independently verify events. These cameras also protect police officers against false accusations of misconduct. Cameras are a good police reform tool and have strong support from members of the public because again, they offer transparency and accountability, which goes a long way in mending relationships between the police and our, uh, community. Every day we continue with the status quo and not honestly confront this problem in our community is a missed opportunity to begin real change. Not addressing this now keeps us on the same path. We need to be proactive instead of waiting for something to happen and react. I always want to say, in, in addition to, uh, to this, you know, body cameras are, yes, but the collection of data is something else that is badly needed. APD must begin to collect and publish data. Data is necessary so it can be analyzed to determine the race, ethnicity, age and gender of people who are stopped, searched and arrested. This information is vital, but too often when data is requested, we're often told data isn't available or impossible to retrieve. And I continue to hear, you know, the comments about the funding, you know, body cameras are so expensive, the, you know, storing of the, the footage, you know? The Alaska Black Caucus stands ready to help, you know, with grant writing and we have individuals that have stepped up to offer their assistance. Also, um, I'm involved at the national level with the, uh, National Leadership Conference on Civil Rights. Wade Henderson just, uh, he is the immediate past president of that organization. He participated on a community conversation with us just last Sunday. He stands ready to help. I just, um, remember the introduction by, uh, one of the previous speakers, uh, I think it was, uh, Mr. Falsy who shared, you know, this has been a conversation for a long time. It is now time to act. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge Groden. We really appreciate your comments and, and I, and I do believe that we're working through this together. So, um, I hope that, um, you'll remain involved in all of the conversations, particularly with the, um, oh, sorry, I got a printer going on in the background here, um, in the conversations with the policy development because I think that's going to be key to a lot of this and it's a little bit of uncharted territory for us. So, um, I know we're going to be having more conversations and a lot of those could be happening right here in this committee. So appreciate that. Um, so do we have anyone else, um, from the public that would like to comment? Got a couple minutes left.
Hello? Hello?
Hello.
This is Eugene Haberman.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Haberman.
Okay. Um, this is a basic reminder, reminder, uh, if you can call Haberman, uh, please don't repeat the performance of the last regular second meeting where on Tuesday there was no doc, uh, copies of documents of the public hearings, papers in the, before getting into the main assembly chambers. That was for the entire Tuesday night's meeting and I reminded the assembly Thursday, that, that same week you had a continuance and you reminded the assembly on Thursday, it was about two hours later after our, after, uh, that meeting started, did, did the, uh, papers show up on the Thursday. So all those, almost all those hearings had no papers available to the public, uh, for that public hearing. So please don't repeat it for next Tuesday's meeting and, uh, thank you for very much and I wish you the best.
Thank you, Mr. Haberman. Uh, we just got a notice here in the queue from Mr. Rivera that said, uh, that issue is being addressed. There'll be copies of all items at the October 13th meeting. So, um, thank you for your attention to detail on that. Uh, are there any other comments, um, from the public? And I'm not hearing anyone. Uh, any final comments from assembly members? And if not hearing anything from anyone, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
And I don't hear a second, but I don't hear any objection. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.